This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire area school board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our school board meeting this evening, our special school board meeting this evening. I've never had to reschedule for snow before, but the snow is still beautiful out there, isn't it? Thanks, everyone, for coming. I also want everyone to be aware of the changes that have happened with Chippewa Valley Community Television. I always thank them at this time. Was coached a little bit to let people know that their structure's a little bit different now. I'd like to thank Valley Media Works, which is the overarching umbrella now as they've gone through some rebranding. The community television piece of Valley Media Works, which is the overall umbrella, focuses primarily on our community channel, Charter 993, and member volunteer activities. Newsworks, under Valley Media Works, is focusing on our government channel and the website, social media information. So if you want to watch the school board meetings, I don't know if any of the board members ever watched the school board meetings on Channel 994? No?
We're here.
I know, but sometimes it's kind of, I mean, I've done it a couple of times just for reflection on my own part on how I run a meeting, but sometimes it's interesting. And then they also have WRFPLP 101.9 FM. At the moment, is continuing to simulcast the government channel. And then the lab, which is a new entity which allows us to focus on our video education courses. So there's lots of changes there. So thank Valley Media Works tonight for putting us on our board docs and so people can participate online. So, let me get rid of that so everybody's aware. And let's stand for the pledge allegiance. Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for changing all that, putting it on a different date. And can you roll call for a quorum, please?
Commissioner Duax.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Harder, absent.
Commissioner Luganville.
Here.
Commissioner Boo, absent. Commissioner Torres.
Here.
And Commissioner Beeka.
Here.
Thanks, Patty. We don't have anyone signed up this evening for our public forum, so that's going to take us right onto the superintendent's report. Dr. Hardebek.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. So tomorrow, this is something that is not on our calendar, but we do have a couple of board members who will be visiting Wildlands School in Augusta to look at the environmental school there. We also, on the 24th, will have a budget development. We did that today. Today's the 24th, sorry. January 30th at noon, there will be a meeting of the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. On January 31st at 11:30 a.m., there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and that will be at the Administration Building. And that will be followed that evening by the regular school board. No, that will be, then on February 5th, we'll have a Policy and Governance Committee meeting at 8:45 a.m., and that will be followed by the regular Board of Education meeting that evening. On February 6th, we will have a meeting of the Parent Advisory Committee. On February 13th, there is a meeting of the LEAP Committee, and that takes place at 4:00 p.m. And that's followed on February 15th by a meeting of the Demographic Trends and Facilities Committee. And both of those meetings will take place at the Administration Building. So, this week, we celebrate the adult crossing guards. And you know, we think about the invaluable service that they provide in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest and most vulnerable pedestrians, and those are our children walking between home and school. The adult crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that kind of discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, and heavy traffic. And sometimes angry traffic. You know, today, the crossing guards were recognized by the Eau Claire Police Department. And we have 17 crossing guards at our schools. And the police department recognized them with cups of hot chocolate and certificates for their service. And I think it shows, number one, our partnership with the police department, but also the appreciation that our community has for the work that our crossing guards do. So, you know, this week, reach out to your crossing guard and thank them for their service to our school district and especially to our students. I also want to thank some people who worked at the Family Fest on Saturday. Again, this was a kind of a community-wide event for families, and we had Emily Cooper, Cassie Stugner, Megan Gazella, Dave Oldenburg, and Megan Zich, who manned our booth at the sports center. And we had pretty good turnout, you know, for the event. And I think this is a fairly new event for our community, but certainly one that we hope to continue to participate in. And that's my report.
Thank you. And that takes us to the president's report. I'm married to a crossing guard. So he's been going through this week and comes home with cookies from kids, and I should have brought the little card that a little child drew a picture of him with his stop sign. And, you know, Steve's never done anything like that before, and it's been a really good experience. I sent him in to be a sub, and he came home as having the job. So he's a split shifter, and he's on TruX in eighth by Roosevelt. So, yeah, he has lots of stories about fast cars, but he's learned that if he puts out cones, it's a little safer. The other thing, as far as the board, I'm going to put together some reports on things that we went to at the Wisconsin, you know, the Education Convention last week. Lots of amazing presentations, and I think I will summarize some of the things that I did. Catherine was there, and Joe was there, and Mary Ann was there, and Jim was there, and Patty was there. So we'll share that with the board. And the other thing I have tonight is, we do have a copy of Raising of America, and this was, we showed this across Eau Claire, and I have it here so that board members could take it home and watch it. It is the premier documentary series to explore how a strong start for all kids is so paramount, but it also goes into some of the policy that's needed in order for, to make it easier for kids to have a strong start and for families to be able to participate in that in a better way. So instead of gathering and watching it together, does any board member want to take it home? And it's, Joe and I have watched it many times because we were across the community showing it. Does anybody want? And then if, Eric, if you could bring it back then, and pass, and then I'll pass it off to somebody else. Yeah. It's, there's one premiere long documentary, and then the other ones are short that feed into that. So I'm really glad that we ordered that series. So thanks. That concludes me, so we can go on to the student report. Who's first tonight? Lauren, you're, Lauren's going first, okay.
Just going to wait and see if you're going to try and guess. All right. Good evening. Happy, today was the first day of our second semester, final semester of high school, for Ryan and I anyways. So last Monday, we worked with the Subcommittee for Academic Award and Recognition and worked towards developing a policy and look forward to next month, it won't be next Monday, but next month, finalizing that policy to recommend to the board. Earlier today, I had a discussion with Ryan and Mr. Schmidt and Commissioner Beeka regarding student evaluations of AP teacher instruction, and I think it was a productive discussion, and I look forward to further conversations. And then I look forward to working with Commissioner Luganville, who contacted me about dedicating the Memorial Library in honor of an influential and impactful Memorial alumni. So I look forward to working with him and the Memorial Student Council on finalizing that. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Lauren. Ryan?
Good evening. I think people at North are excited to start the new semester and have finals done. So touching on what Lauren said, we had a good meeting with Dr. Beeka and Mr. Schmidt. And a couple of things that we looked at was the correlation between AP test scores and the respective course grade, and the possibility of having pre-surveys for the AP course and student, how students felt going into the test and after the test in terms of preparedness. So lots of different things we talked about. We're going to have more discussion later on about that after reading a little bit and researching it more. Also, our Student Council, like, started thinking or planning on having a candidate forum for the upcoming election. And I heard recently that the Chamber and the PAC Committee also has a similar forum, so we are looking to coordinate with them and have, hopefully have the debate at North as our number one, our number one priority isn't forming the public, of course, but two and three is, two is getting the North Student Council brand out there and having, getting North out there as a competitor just equal to Memorial. And number three is having, working with our Student Council students and having them put on something, put on a good product, and executing something like that. And I think if anybody who attended our Veterans Day ceremony knows, our students are very capable of putting on something that large. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Yep, those forums will start to come fast and furious, probably March. I know the Chamber's scheduled in March, I'll send you that date. Okay, that takes us on to our school board committee reports. Who's up for a report? Budget development met today.
The, well, we spent all of our time on the OPEB plans and examining different plans with our consultant. So, the other report that I had was on the Public Schools Foundation. We will be having a training session next Tuesday, and I'm looking forward to that.
What's it going to be about? I mean, what's the training session?
I'm trying to remember. There's a person at Oracle Management that will be training us, and I forgot the exact topic.
It's about strengthening the organization.
Okay. Strengthening the organization, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Duax.
Should be good.
Yeah, thank you for your work on all that. Demo and trends, have they met?
Yes, we met January 18th. Welcomed several new members, and much of the meeting was a sort of orientation for those new members. But I also wanted to mention that there was an extensive conversation about it. It's prompted by the new development Highclaire, thinking about elementary school boundaries for that development in the surrounding area, but it really led into a much larger conversation that I thought was, was very impressive about all of the factors we should be considering with elementary school boundaries, and even how those impact middle school and high school boundaries as well. So I look forward to that committee doing more in the upcoming meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeka. LEAP, we're meeting, and Policy and Governance, Commissioner Luganville.
We had a very lively meeting on Monday. We had a discussion about our facility use agreement, following up on concerns and questions that we've received over the past month and a half or so. So that was a good, good meeting, though, good conversation, a lot of good questions, and we'll have some follow-up on that with a number of stakeholders. At our next meeting, we'll be continuing to work on our policy regarding school resource officers. And if time allows, we'll also start a discussion regarding the district's policies relating to sexual harassment. And of course, that's timely right now with everything going on in the world, but actually, it was sparked by the legal update that we received at the State Education Convention. They talked quite a bit about sexual harassment policies in school districts, and in looking at ours, some are as old as 18 years old, some are newer, but I think it's a good time to have that conversation. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. That takes us, I also had a meeting with Head Start Policy and Governance. We met yesterday, and I basically had time during the meeting to just pull them up to speed on some of the resolution work and answer their questions. And they're working on their grant, which will come up next meeting. And I have a really impressive Head Start handout that I will give you that evening, put together for Head Start. Commissioner Duax?
Well, I also thought I should report as the delegate to the convention, the WASBE convention, that all of the resolutions that you voted for, which there are eight, maybe nine, I think there was a ninth one at the end from Waukesha, that those all passed. So it was a very interesting session to watch that legislation in action.
The resolution that this board submitted on voucher transparency passed without discussion, without debate. So that was nice. Okay? Anyone else? Okay. That takes us on to our legislative update. Commissioner Luganville, do you have any updates for tonight?
Just a few. There's a rather substantive hearing scheduled tomorrow at the Assembly Education Committee regarding a couple of bills. One is regarding sparsity aid and low revenue limit ceiling. So this would revive a deleted budget proposal from last year that the School Board Association was pushing for, which would increase the low revenue ceiling for school districts to $9,400 in the 2018-19 school year, and increase the ceiling by $100 each school year until the ceiling reaches $9,800 in the 22-23 school year. So there's that. Most of the education advocates have supported this bill, but with the caveat that legislators remove the provision to freeze limits at current levels for districts that failed to pass a referendum. So we'll stay tuned on that. There's a policy, legislation relating to courses that generate a profit for the school district that they're discussing, but the most controversial thing that they're talking about tomorrow is ESAs, Education Savings Accounts. And I brought this up last year, nothing was done with it last session last year. But this bill would introduce, in essence, kind of a new kind of vouchers, a new kind of voucher for Wisconsin students, but it would be a portable voucher and a more flexible voucher. So it would come in the form of a $1,000 savings account that could be used by parents to receive the extracurricular programming of their choice outside of the school day from a private vendor. So it's, it's very interesting. At the time of the bill's posting, the only lobbying interests on behalf of this are the American Federation for Children and School Choice Wisconsin, both in favor. And they've been the main organizations pushing this, as they have pushed the other choice programs in the state. So it's been a, it's been a political objective of the voucher movement to get ESAs going across the country now. So we've been expecting this. But, and it has actually brought, ESAs have brought some court battles in some states. But the, we'll stay tuned on that. The hearing is tomorrow, and I plan to write an email to the committee, but, and I'd recommend that we all do that if we can. I have just the one last thing with WASBE. Our resolution passed unanimously, which was great. I walked right up there, introduced it, and got to go right back down because it passed with no discussion and no one voted no. So that was really cool. But then, moving forward, we're going to be developing a toolkit with the Wisconsin Public Education Network, and it'll be a webpage where school boards and municipalities from across the state can kind of see sample resolutions, sample webpages they can make in their district, and take action on this. Sample letters to the editor. And really, what we're hoping to do also is mobilize districts to do what Milwaukee has, which is, they actually have an insert with the property tax bill for every citizen, and they, it has a slip with information about the voucher program and the funds that are levied to the voucher program. So that's, that's another direction that we're going with that.
Can I make a comment on that as well? There's approximately 17 districts that have submitted resolutions. They're not all listed on WASBE website yet. Sun Prairie will, will bring it up for possible passage, their first meeting in February. And then Madison and La Crosse are also entertaining it as well. And so that's good. And Oshkosh? Okay. And Oshkosh. Okay. That takes us on to our consent resolution agenda. As board members, you know you can pull anything off of this, off the list that you need clarification for or would like to comment. So I'll entertain a motion to pass the minutes of January 8th, 2018. The minutes of closed session, January 8th, 2018. The 2017-18 budget adjustments. The financial report from December 2017. Gifts in the amount of $24,677.67 for the period of December 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. Human resource employment report. Administrative contract extensions. And removal of the stage curtain at the Administration Building. Oh, I did. And payment of all bills in the amount of $5,973,730.85, and net payroll in the amount of $3,474,582.41 for the period of December 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. Now are we done? So I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of 7.2 through 7.10.
Moved by Commissioner Luganville, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duax. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Patty? Thank you for taking care of me, board and superintendent.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeka?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes. Okay, so that takes us on to individual considered resolutions. Our first one is school programs not available for open enrollment. Who is going to talk about that? Is that Tim? Thank you.
Sure. Each year, the State of Wisconsin DPI requires that, as part of open enrollment, school districts identify programs, or special programs, or grade levels that are closed to open enrollment for primarily crowding reasons or enrollment reasons. What you have on your executive summary are two programs that have been closed to open enrollment, meaning that families do not have an opportunity or an expectation to be placed in those programs. One is the Arctic Zone at North Star, and the other is Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School. And then we also have closed, in our Special Education Program, our one-on-one programming that is being delivered in our cluster sites, and that is because of, again, enrollment issues where we don't have space for non-resident students.
Thank you. So, any questions, discussion? Commissioner Luganville?
I'm just curious, with, with some of our elementary, well, I'm just thinking of our elementary schools that are kind of at capacity, do we, what, how do we process that if there's an open enrollment request for, say, Roosevelt Elementary School?
Non-resident families apply to open enrollment to the district, not to a school. So we place students in schools that have space available.
So then, the only other question I had, that, that's good. The only other question I had was regarding McKinley Charter School. Are they limited space-wise?
So the application or the admission process to McKinley is that you need to be referred by a, by one of our other two high schools. So we can admit students in open enrollment and maybe place them in a high school for a period of time, waiting the natural process of enrollment and admission to McKinley.
Thanks for the clarification. Does anyone else have? No? Can I have a motion to move this forward? So moved by Commissioner Duax, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. That takes us on to our five-year capital selected projects. And I am Larry. Thank you.
So back in December, we presented our five-year plan for consideration for the board. We've had one development since that time. We've had some trouble with the heating system at Little Red that maintains the temperature at a moderate level at the building, and I'm not sure that that system is going to last another year. So with that, we've put together a second, this is the original plan that we had presented back in December. The alternate one is a modification of that in that it delays about $180,000 worth of window replacement at the district office to allow us to have funds to take care of the boiler and an air handler at Little Red to solve our immediate needs there.
So is that a change than what we originally received because?
Because of the Little Red. That showed $180,000 for boiler and air handler work at Little Red, and took the money from the window project at the district administrative office. So we would do about a third of the remaining windows this next summer, and then the remainder would be hopefully in our five-year for the following year. And then, our alternate number two plan that we put together was after there was discussion at the last meet, two meetings ago, about whether the culinary labs would go forward. So I put this together. If you decided that you wanted more time to discuss and explore the culinary labs, all of the deferred projects would move over to take the place of that.
Commissioner Luganville?
If this is more informal.
Yeah, yeah.
So we understand one of the questions, when we were talking about the culinary labs, was that there wasn't a definitive value put on the equipment. And so that was shared in the Friday letter, but we wanted to make sure that that was also, you know, part of the presentation, because I believe that was missing earlier. And so from the spreadsheet, you can see that the equipment requests for both buildings just for the culinary lab part is about $148,000. And if we look at the culinary project in total, if we look at just the construction pieces, for Memorial, it's $360,000, for North, it's $340,000, and the equipment. So the total price tag for this project is $847,000. Part of it, the biggest chunk of that coming out of the five-year capital plan, which is about $700,000, which is about 44% of that $1.6 million budget. And then there's Phase Two to the culinary lab project, which is the baking lab. And so we've got the construction costed out, and that was on the original plan, but as a deferred, so, you know, looking at it at the next year or so. And so if you were to include that all and do it all in one year, the equipment for the baking has not been identified because we don't, we didn't think that we would be able to afford to do it both at the same time. So without that baking equipment part, you can see that the price tag for that project for both schools is just over $1.3 million. And so we would expect that number to go up based upon what those equipment needs are. And so again, just wanted to make sure that the board kind of understood what the full value was. The other thing I wanted to remind the board is the budget priorities. We're still, you know, very early phases of budgeting for next year, and so I shared with the board at the last board meeting, you know, the technology refresh is a big priority for this next year, because if we don't get the technology refreshed, we are going to have issues with supporting for state testing, and we don't want to be in that situation for our 11,200, 300 students. The salary level estimate, we talked about last time, that the board had committed to the salary level movement. Very preliminary building and grounds equipment request, that's what was cut out of the 17-18 budget. Doesn't mean there isn't more things identified, you know, that we may need to move on sooner rather than later. Year two, the mentor program, that's an additional cost, because this year was the first year of the mentor program, and so that cost continues, but then we need to add that second year cost that, because we'll be in year two of the program, so that's a That's an additional cost for our budget next year. Musical instruments, you will remember, we cut them out of the budget this year and that's about $150,000. One thing that's not on the list, but I don't want the Board to lose sight of, is we committed to uniforms. So this year, we did purchase band uniforms from Memorial High School to get them in the rotation. North is on the list for this upcoming year. And so it's not on the list because I assumed we were going to move forward with that. But again, something that we should be considering because, you know, it's in our budget right now and I'm assuming we would move forward with that. But just something to make sure that the Board is aware of as well. Benefit changes. We're starting to get some early information as far as benefit changes that would have an impact to our budget and CPI, which should be determined later this month. And so those are things right now that we can measure and some that we don't. And I just don't want anybody to lose sight of those important things that will impact our budget as well.
Superintendent Hardaback?
So as we have talked about budget planning for this year, the Board had requested that we have some type of trigger mechanism, I think was the way that it was described, to alert the Board of decisions that might impact our budget in a significant way. And so I had asked Abby to put these budget priorities together for you so that you would have not only the capital improvement plan and the aspects of that that we may not, it's not that we might not want to do them, but we might want to table aspects of it until we can do some further study. But it would give you that mechanism that you asked for, to be aware of any significant budget impact. And certainly, all of these priorities will have an impact on our budgeting and our budget planning for next year.
Thank you. Any questions?
I've got one more slide to share with you.
That's okay, no problem. It's an important one, too. So I just wanted to let the Board know kind of where administration stands right now. And I think that we should look at holding on the culinary project because of the budget impact. Again, as I said before, the construction costs, just the construction costs are 44% of that 1.6 capital project budget. I think we could come back to budget development to review the project to determine is there anything that can be done differently with less impact to the budget. I think under that, you know, we could look at modifying the plans. Do we look at doing one lab in 1819 and one lab in 1920? I know that then that brings into that equity conversation, which we have quite frequently. Do we look at revising the equipment list? Are there any options there to reduce the cost? You know, I'm sure there's a multitude of other things that the Board may ask us to do or to look at, but those were some of the things that came to mind right off the bat. So with that, what questions can we help you answer?
Well, I just want to make a comment on the culinary piece, or all of it, because I know that we have to watch every penny. But the culinary connection to our community is, is large. There's also, I think, some safety things, you know, that might need to be taken care of as far as hoods and ventilation and stuff like that. Not sure specifically, so maybe I need to be corrected. And that's an increased enrollment. I mean, we increasingly have increased enrollment in that program. And they've been waiting for this for a while. So I don't know how we message that. I'm having a little trouble with that, so.
Commissioner Luganville?
I, I know what a tough position administration is in, having to bring this to us because it's, it's very difficult. It's a no-win situation for something. I guess for me, I know historically with the culinary program, and I tried to pull up some information, but it looks like in the April 2000 referendum, a remodel of the culinary arts lab was included. And that's what we were told. But during the, but during the, but during the building process, the improvements to the lab were not able to be implemented or included because of other things that came up, other bigger costs. So it was there, it was in the plans 18 years ago, and something came up. And I don't want us to repeat history in that way. Unfortunately, we already have several times. And I, I know that for us to be a part of the Pro Start curriculum, which is about preparing the kids to be industry-ready, it, it, we really need to have facilities that are up to par and that currently we do not meet their curriculum with the facilities. One way that we don't is with the ranges. Because the students, for the, the norm for the food service industry and what we recommend for the Pro Start is gas ranges. And they're electric there. So I guess, and there are a number of other areas of this, too, but I'm just very concerned that this is something with these two high schools that we've, as a district, have been needing to do for 18 years. And it keeps getting pushed. And I'm not sure how much further we can push it. So I guess for me, I would, I would support the option one with, with working on the piece with the windows, some flexibility there so you can handle the boiler, but still committing to the 2018-19 for the two high school culinary. That's what I would really support. Just because I feel like we've, we've played kick the can on this one for a while and especially considering how much of a partner the Wisconsin Restaurant Association is with our district. And they've been asking for this for 18 years and telling us for 18 years, you need to do this. And, and also considering that the restaurant industry is just growing exponentially in the Chippewa Valley. You've just seen in the past few years how much it's boomed. To me, there are just so many factors that for us to not commit to this once again, it'd be 19 years then, since the district first put it in our plan and committed to it in 2000. So I, I would really support option one. If not now, you know.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. Superintendent Hardaback?
So just as a clarification in terms of the certifications that are available to our students and the equipment that is needed for that, one of the things that Jim Schmidt did when he was in Milwaukee was to tour the culinary program in Milwaukee, which is kind of the, it's one of the exemplars in the state. And I'd like for Jim to talk to you a little bit about what he found out about equipment needs and that kind of thing, which has more or less influenced some of our recommendation to you to at least review the original recommendation.
Thank you. Actually, to provide a little more context to that, a few years ago, we worked with National Restaurant Association and Pro Start just to get a list. They have, and I can share that with you, they have a suggested equipment list. And they categorize their equipment under good and best. And that the resident, and they term it in terms of the ranges. Either residential is under the good and commercial is under best. So technically, you can do the Pro Start curriculum with residential equipment, such as in, that would come from both the flat top and the gas home ranges. So when we went to the site visit at Washington High School in Milwaukee, they actually have seven residential ranges, three of which were gas, four which were flat top, and then they had one commercial. And then they, and part of their philosophy is that they are, that they wanted students to be proficient actually on all of the pieces and build towards that, build towards the, the, the commercial version. The other piece is, which we felt a little validated by the work that, that Larry and Dave Oldenburg and Sue Brown did because their cost came in very similar to ours. It was $450,000 for, to renovate the one school. If you double that, you get to $900,000, which is pretty, pretty much in the range of where we are. But the one thing they did do, and this is back to that partnership piece, is they did a collaborative effort between the community restaurants and, and the district where the restaurants, through donations, helped take care of about half that cost through, through that partnership. That would take a little while to build that, that connection and work. We already did have, obviously, we had a situation here a little over a year ago where there was a donation. So there, we do know that there is probably interest in that happening. But that is one of the, the strategies that they did to try to shorten that, that, that cost for them.
Commissioner Dux?
I don't want to cut the, the discussion short, but as a member of the Budget Development Committee, and I see that we don't know the CPI and there was some other budget thing that you had benefits listed there. I'd like to refer this discussion back to the Budget Development Committee and have more discussion on it. I don't feel like I'm ready to vote on prioritizing these projects tonight. And so I'm, can I make a motion on that? I move that we refer this, this list of budget priorities back to the Budget Development Committee.
Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Torres. Can we take a roll call vote? Patty, please? I'll let you finish typing. Yes, Dr. Hardaback?
So is, with the motion, is, is your motion to send the culinary piece back to be considered with the other priorities? Or are you sending the whole capital improvement plan back to the Budget Development?
Should we send the whole list that was listed here tonight?
Just discussion by the Board?
Commissioner Luganville?
I guess I, I understand that we want to keep talking about this, but this has been discussed for 18 years.
No, it hasn't.
And it has been.
I've been on the Board nine years and this, last year was the first year I heard about the culinary project.
I think that the level of who's been talking about it has varied. But I know that this has been a conversation that has occurred in the district. Maybe it's been administrative, maybe not by the whole Board.
No.
And I don't think I said that, but.
No, but you.
So I guess, to me, I just, this is something that we really need to treat with some urgency because I feel that every year, if we really want to, we could find a reason to decide to hold on this. We really could. And that's happened in the past. So I, I just, I don't want to send the message to the hundreds of kids who are in our culinary programs doing a great job that this isn't a priority. That's a message that's been sent, whether we want it to be sent or not. And I mean, if, if, if the whole Board feels we need to send it back for discussion, that's fine, but I'm of the opinion that a lot of the discussion that we want to occur should have happened already and in some ways has. So I, I guess I'm just concerned that we're, about the message that we're sending here and about the priority that we're setting here. I, I think we can make it work if we truly value this program. That's just where I'm at, but.
Commissioner Dux?
I value the recommendation of Larry and of course of Abby. But I think we have gotten caught on a couple of places in our budget in the past and I just feel like we're a little premature in making this final, final budget decision. And I know you feel like we, we don't want to let it go too long and I don't want to let it go too long. But I also see these other things on the list, the other priorities. And I'd just like to have a little more discussion to be safe. So I'm, I'm going to vote to return it to committee.
I, I'll make a comment, too, before we vote. And then I'll, is, I was enlightened a bit tonight with Jim's visit to, when he went to visit in Milwaukee in the sense of your comment that there was a variety of equipment. Meaning, as far as culinary arts goes, you can run your own business, you know, and you can be on different platforms like that relative to the cost. So I am in like-minded that this has been there for a long time and we need to do something, but given some additional information, maybe some of the equipment cost could be looked at with a little more.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion, yeah.
Commissioner Luganville?
I think if, with what Commissioner Dux said, have a little discussion to be safe. I support that. Having a little discussion to be safe, that's fine. But what I don't want it to become is this getting pushed again. And, and because there, there is some investment that has to happen there with these programs. You know, we're the eighth largest district in the state. We need to have, I think, at least the eighth largest, the eighth best culinary program in terms of what we provide for the kids facility-wise. So I, I, I think it's fine if we want to be safe with it. I think especially given recent discussions, that makes sense budget-wise. But I just, knowing that this is, this was first asked for and put in a plan in 2000 for what this is, you know, I just think we need to treat with some urgency.
Dr. Hardaback?
And I think all of these are valid points. I think one of the things that we might want to look to do is a way maybe to stage the improvements to culinary labs in a way that enables us to do other things as well. You know, as we talked about this being 44% of the overall capital improvement budget, you know, we may want to look at maybe reducing that percentage, but still going ahead with the work and in a way that would be equitable to both schools and talking about how we might do that. I think the, the, in the sense of the urgency of the capital improvement plan are some of the other projects that are included that will need to go out to bid. So, you know, my question in terms of the, of the motion is are we like holding, you know, maybe for a month or so to get other options for the culinary lab and approving the capital improvement piece of it? And maybe Abby or Larry could tell you what you're voting on in terms of the capital improvement piece and then taking that culinary project out to do some further study.
Discussion?
I, I think that's, that's a good idea and, and I could go along with that. I don't want a shortchanged culinary program at all, but I just need more assurance that, that we're covering our budget adequately and that maybe there are some alternate things that we can do, having heard Jim's report for the culinary program.
So, so if the culinary piece is there, then the people involved in that program will be involved in this discussion as well? And the timeline and what that might look like? If, in fact, that's what happens?
I think that's, if the Board decides that that's what we're going to do, then we would work with Dave Oldenburg's office. Again, because they're the ones that worked very heavily with the schools about the equipment list and what would meet their needs. And so would anticipate we would start those conversations again and say, okay, here's, here's what we need to look at. And I'm sure Jim would be able to share some of his experiences in traveling to Milwaukee as well.
I'm also hearing that the Board doesn't want to pull that piece out because it is part of what this plan is. I think if we pull it out, then it might be treated differently. And I guess at this point in time, if we want to do a check with the budget and to see what that looks like with budget development, again, I don't mind. But I don't want it being treated separately either.
I think the challenge is exactly as Dr. Hardaback referred to earlier is we're already behind the eight ball in getting projects out to bid. We are hearing from contractors that they're getting lots of bids. And so if we delay the rest of the five-year capital projects, we may not be able to get some of the work done as planned this summer because kind of like last year, we had the, we finalized the Memorial Secure Entrance Plan later and then we didn't get any bids. And so we had to push that back. And so there would be a very strong concern from myself as well as from Larry as well that if we don't, if we push it all back and send it all back to Budget Development, then we're going to delay that bid process because there's bid documents that need to be created. Some design work needs to be created and that all takes time. And so we might be looking at, and I'm just going to throw this out there, maybe March before we can bid. And by March, a lot of companies already have their bids out there and they're set for their summer work. And so we could be putting ourselves in that same position that we struggled with last year. And so, not to say that it can't be done, I just want everybody to be very aware that that would be a very strong concern from our end as well.
Anyone else? Commissioner Luganville?
I guess, I, I like the option Dr. Hardaback describes of having this in stages and breaking it down. I, I, I kind of wish that maybe would be what we looked at in the past because maybe we could have taken the elephant one bite at a time and not have pushed this entire thing for 18 years. 18 years. And it isn't put on any one person, it really isn't. So I don't know if it's an option for maybe some folks and whether it's Budget Development or just administration-wise to come back to us with some first things that can be done and not the whole enchilada. I mean, I think there has to be something that we could do in the 2018-19 school year that is substantive and maybe wouldn't take up the lion's share of the capital plan.
Commissioner Duex?
The construction was the first thing I believe on your list and that probably, am I correct, that needs to be bid out right away?
Yes, that's the case. I'd also like to clarify that in the 2000 referendum projects, it wasn't that culinary was cut out completely. Spaces were created within that referendum for the culinary rooms. Hoods were installed, sinks were installed, gas lines were run, and a phased approach that showed what the future equipment would be in that space was created. So there was significant funds that were spent, but probably not to the extent of what staff or others were expecting.
Well, and the phases weren't followed.
Right.
Right.
Dr. Hartaback?
So I'm trying to figure out how we can move forward with the construction piece that Larry needs to bid while we study the culinary piece. I'm thinking we still have, what would that be, 56% of the capital improvement budget that would be out there and that I think there's support for. It's whether or not we want to do, as Commissioner Loganbill said, the whole enchilada or we want to do in stages. So I'm wondering if you would have a recommendation of what the board could possibly approve tonight for bid on the capital improvement plan and then what would be taken out of the plan?
My recommendation would be the alternate one, plan number one that is shown here. We, what I would suggest is approving everything in the budgeted columns with the exception of the culinary piece. That would take care of our issue a little red, allow us to start design work on the rest of the budgeted projects. And then the question down the road is, the $700,000 for culinary, what does that look like? Does it, is it, is it the culinary piece? Is it culinary plus a few of the deferred projects? But we would get at least 50%, 56% of it starting under design work and getting ready for bid.
Okay. So if in looking at some of the fundraising as well, who would be responsible for doing that or where are those connections for those pieces?
We would probably start with our advisory team. There is a hospitality advisory team that would probably be the start and then deciding a work plan from there.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just bring up a second thing? Can you bring this down a few more slides later? So we should be clear, and again, I'm trying to wrap my head around this too, one more, there you go. So the top two item, these two items here, right, the top two are the, that's the capital part that you should be doing. And so, but that's still, you can do, let's just say you just did one of them, you still have to populate the lab with something, whether, and that, so I think there's just two things to think about. There's actually the physical environment, but then there's the actual stuff that's not part of the capital plan that we still need to. So that physically, like the ranges, things like that are going to be outside of the capital plan that still is. And then if you go down one more slide, that's, you know, it's same pot, or the same pot of money. So I just want to be clear about, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around this too, how you'd phase it. So I just wanted to be clear that those are, I see four things, right? I see two different capital projects, I see two different equipment lists.
One more thing that you just made me think of is that I saw this note on the bottom of the screen as well, that, you know, when these areas are redone, and we saw it this year, we added some FTE in the culinary arts program. And so then the budget increased in there as well because very much of their budget is driven by consumable supplies. And so then, you know, that will continue to have a budget impact as well and it's really hard to predict because, you know, their classes, the offerings change and the number of kids change. But that would be also something that would have a budget impact. I know it's got a budget impact in the 17-18 budget and I would anticipate when that work is done and that area is expanded, we would draw more kids to that. And then again, we would have, you know, additional ongoing budget consumables that would need to be budgeted for, that would fall outside of any of these numbers that we've provided today.
And as one more additional point, and I think that Commissioner Duex referred to this, but in, I think it was our last Budget Development meeting, there were some questions raised about the cost of the culinary lab and how it would come into our priorities. And so the Budget Development Committee did raise the questions, which then kind of sent us back to the drawing board in terms of the capital improvement plan and then with what Jim learned on his visit. So I kind of want to give you some context along with, you know, the thing that you requested, that if we're going to have significant impact on the budget, we need to really point that out to you and talk about that.
Commissioner Logan, did you have your name?
There is one other piece. Dave Oldenburg sits on the advisory team and he actually got some feedback from them too, and I think cost was a concern for that group as well. If you want more detail, he can provide that.
So what is on the table as a motion right now is to take the entire piece back to Budget Development. Do we want to amend our motion? Because you have some expediency.
If no one else agrees, they can turn down my motion. You know, if they don't want to do that.
I think what you're asking is, do you want to split the motion so that you take the culinary piece out and pass the rest of the capital improvement piece?
But we can vote down your motion and redo it too.
Yes.
Should we do that?
Sure.
Do I do it that way?
That's fine.
Yep. Can you read the motion, Patty?
I have refer list of budget priorities presented back to the Budget Development Committee. So that would be everything as I read it.
Okay. Can we take a, any further discussion on it?
So is that, I'm understanding that'll slow down the bid process in some way?
Patty, you want to take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Loganbill?
No.
Commissioner Torres?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Torres?
We're voting on the motion.
To? Send everything back to Budget Development.
Uh, no.
Commissioner Bika?
No.
Commissioner Duex?
No.
Commissioner Hamburg Oil?
No. So now we will entertain another motion by the board. Commissioner Duex, you brave person.
Would you know what I mean if I say, separate the culinary project out from the rest of the?
The five-year capital plan.
Yes. Separate it out for further review.
Does everybody understand that motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, the motion by Commissioner Torres.
So just to clarify, there's nothing in that motion that says anything about the Budget Development Committee being involved? So I didn't know if, okay.
No, it's just for the review and I think there's, there are people like Mr. Schmidt suggested, Mr. Oldenburg, to review those things and talk about equipment further.
Okay. Then there would be another, well, I'll let you guys.
To pass the, the motion is to pass the rest of the building.
So. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
That is not included in that motion.
So you need to specify what would be included in that alternate plan.
Right. So I think it might be easiest to say, make the motion to recognize alternate plan one and then say, except for the Memorial Culinary Cooking Lab renovation and except for the North Culinary Cooking Lab renovation, because those two are separately identifiable on that list. That might just help if we need to go back and see exactly what you're talking about. Sorry to interrupt.
I'll let Patty read it to us when you get it done.
I'm not sure if you want that second, the first part of the motion that she said, but to recognize alternate plan one, except for the Memorial and North Culinary Lab renovations. And then I had separate the project, culinary project out from the rest of the five-year capital plan for further review.
Could I just ask for clarification if someone could go to the alternative plan two slide, just so I can see what?
Do you want us to highlight the difference for you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go back to one. So in one, under the budget, you can see the Memorial and the North Culinary Cooking Labs, you see the 360 and the 340 on the screen. And if you go to alternate plan two, the 360 and the 340 is now in the deferred column. So basically, there's been some changes between the budget column and the deferred column. Still comes down to the 1.6 million, but it's by shifting the projects around.
So just for clarification, if this plan were to be approved, you could achieve what Commissioner Duex is asking for in terms of having it sent back, correct? Or do you think that it would potentially look different than what this deferred amount is?
Yes. If we would, if you would vote on alternate plan two, we would move forward with all of the projects listed and then under deferred, that means it would be deferred at a minimum of a year.
For 2019, 2020?
Correct. Yep, 2019, 2020. Versus alternate one by saying, I don't want to move those two forward, at least they're still planned as part of that 1.6 million for further review. So could potentially still have, the goal would be to still get that through for 1819. If we go with alternate plan two, we've committed our 1.6 and it's off the table completely. I don't want to be grim, but I just want to make sure we all understand.
That makes sense. I would also, just before we vote, would like to say that there's some expediency that's needed for this as well so that if there are things we can do, that can be bid out in an appropriate amount of time for the culinary labs as well. So there, you know what I mean? So we're pulling it out, but it isn't just that we, you know, give.
Well, I think we typically don't bid projects out till we have them, you know, approved by the board that says, please move forward with them. And so we can work on our end to be as expedient as possible to get to the information. Because again, we recognize that in order to get them bid and committed to the project, that takes time on our end as well.
I just want to make sure. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody ready to vote?
Can you read the?
So do you want the piece in about separate the culinary labs out from the rest of the five-year capital plan for further review or does accept alternate plan number one, except for the Memorial and North Culinary Lab renovation, does that do it? So take the second, the first, the first motion that, okay. So the motion then would be, accept alternate plan one, except for the Memorial and North Culinary Lab renovation. So renovations.
But it still keeps it in the plan?
Correct. It's basically what the motion is and the way I'm understanding it is that it's not approving it right now today because you want us to get some more information, but it's not pushing it into any further years.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? Okay, roll call vote, Patty.
Commissioner Loganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Oil?
Yes. Thank you, Abby and Larry, very much for your work on that. So that takes us to requests for future agenda items. Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see a light on, Dr. Torres, so go ahead.
I will request again a report on the dual immersion project to be considered by the board.
Yeah, I think it's been brought up before. Thank you, Dr. Torres.
I'm grant of it today.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, I'm glad you guys, when I don't see your light on, okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
So moved by Commissioner Loganbill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bika, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between NewWorks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. NewWorks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.